Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Carrangelo. Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Gwass. Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
President Lacks.
Here, we have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for a later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, and as we generally do for our one fan, one fan, we're going to go into closed session, so whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exception to the Open Public Meetings Act, and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that discussions of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hong, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries, thank you. We'll see you and your friends that will be joining you shortly in an hour. Okay, welcome back. I always like our after the breaks, we have a little bit more of a crowd, which makes us very happy, and I know that it makes Dr. Waleski happy because he loves to present his report to a very, very packed house. Good job, Christian made it the bell.
Hey, Chris. Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone. Congratulations to the East Brunswick High School Model UN team for winning outstanding large delegation at the 2023 Rutgers Model UN Competition. The students and chaperones worked diligently all weekend with their mindset on exemplifying EB excellence. The high school math team recently competed in the American Mathematics Competition. At each high school, if the top three scores total 300 or greater, the three scorers earn the school certificate of merit award. And I'm excited to share that with the combined scores of our top three East Brunswick High School performers reaching 315, they qualified for this award. The students are Aaron Wong, Michael Chai, and Sasha Nfetel. On Friday, November 17th, a group from the Beijing National Day School visited our schools. The Beijing National Day School is a competitive public boarding high school with 4,000 students from grades seven to 12. The school hosts international teachers from every continent who bring with them not only diversity but high teaching standards. Dr. Bowley, Assistant Superintendent of Academics and their principal, Ten Young, took the group to East Brunswick High School and Churchill Junior High School. The group met with building principals and supervisors to learn more about our curriculum, instructional methodologies, and how teacher evaluations are conducted. The delegation looks forward to building on the relationship with East Brunswick public schools and possibly exploring exchange student programs, cultural exchange activities, online education for advanced courses, and training opportunities for teachers, all of which we would certainly share with the Board before we initiated anything. Third grade students at Chittick Elementary School recently studied narrative nonfiction in reading. As part of this unit, students learned about Tony Sarg, the man who created balloons for the very first Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. The third graders created their own balloons to celebrate Mr. Sarg and Thanksgiving by having a parade, a parade throughout school hallways, and this was the third year of this ongoing tradition. That was very cool. Thank you to the EBEF for funding a mini grant called Orchestral Audition Workshop, which took place on Monday, November 27th, at Churchill. The workshop featured Jonathan Beiler, a longstanding violinist with the Philadelphia Orchestra, and Lynn Beiler, a professional cellist who has performed with the Philadelphia Ballet and orchestra and opera companies. The Beilers started off our workshop by sharing their wisdom with students about preparing for additions, auditions. They were able to reflect on their long careers as professional musicians and tell students the things they wished they had known, along with some tips to help calm nerves. Next, students played their audition material for upcoming regional auditions and received expert feedback. The workshop concluded with a short duet performance from the Beilers, and it was a fantastic day filled with inspiration and so much learning. On Tuesday, November 28th, actually this past Tuesday, Dr. Vanilla and I presented the challenges of our current aging high school and options for renovation or replacement that could be considered by the East Brunswick community at a future referendum, and that would be most likely sometime later in 2025. The presentation is posted on the homepage of our website, and actually the video produced by EBTV is up there as well. And along there are QR codes we use to capture community feedback. Those QR codes will remain active until 4:00 PM this coming Monday, December 4th. So even if you were not able to attend last, that event, the voice is important to the Board of Education, the administrative team, so the QR codes is the best way to provide input on the future of the high school.
And you'll be hosting another.
I'll be hosting many more of those events, and we'll be looking for opportunities to take that show on the road, so we can meet people at their locations. The East Brunswick Education Foundation will be hosting their annual Barnes and Noble Day this Saturday, December 2nd. There'll be fun activities for students and community, including EBEF swag and teacher and student raffles, cupcake decorating, a bookmark making station, orchestra and choral demonstrations, and so much more. Please come out to support the EBEF and their efforts to support our schools as they raise funds to supply our teachers with innovative grants and materials that enhance our students' curriculum throughout the school year. This year's high school fall drama production is She Kills Monsters. Performances are Friday, December 8th, and Saturday, December 9th at 7:00 PM, and then on Sunday, December 10th, the performance will begin at 3:00 PM. Tickets, as always, can be purchased at ebhsdrama.org. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Are you sure that's all you have?
That's all I have. I have to give time for Chris O to give a presentation about the high school today.
I just thought that you might want to mention when you talked about EBEF, the most recent event of theirs that you were at. You forgot already?
It's a ballerina.
Yeah, no, what sir to tell? What, there, I'm sorry, was there something that I missed?
You know, and I'm upset, I meant to send the picture, I apologize.
What, Mr. Cummings?
Of the two of you, yes, yes. I shouldn't laugh too much, I took it from the sidelines, but you know.
It was a great race, we'll be back next year for a rematch. See you on the course.
But you beat him.
Of course, and I said, even though he, he cut half the distance off the course, it's still okay.
That's right. Sorry, that was, well, we'll talk about that later on then, all right. Because we do have some exciting presentations this evening. The first one, we have Jamie Kennard is going to give us an update. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Bowley, are you going to start us off?
I'm going to introduce Jamie.
Okay, my apologies, I'm jumping the gun. We are going to hear more about the FLEX program, which I really appreciate because I have been asking to hear, for those who are not familiar with it, and for those who are, just what's going on in your FLEX world, so.
Yes, we're happy to be here this evening. So, good evening, you know that the mantra for the Department of Academics is meeting the needs of all learners, and the FLEX program is definitely a big part of that mission. The FLEX program started small in 2018, and Ms. Jamie Kennard came on board in 2019, and I'd like to say it's a labor of love for her. Jamie has really built this program into what it is today, and she has big plans for the future. So I'm really happy and excited that Jamie Kennard is with us this evening to share an update and an overview of the East Brunswick FLEX program with all of you. Jamie.
Thank you, Dr. Bowley. Dr. Waleski, President Lacks, it's a pleasure to see you, it's a pleasure to see the entire Board tonight, and like Dr. Bowley said, I'm really excited to talk to you tonight about the FLEX program. So the FLEX program is actually all, our alternative program for our at-risk students. And our at-risk students are students who are in danger of not graduating. So our goal for them is to help them develop the social, emotional, and the academic skills that they need to be successful, not only back in the traditional environment, but out in the world outside of high school. We know from experience that students who are not ready to learn, don't. And so we really focus on giving them the social and emotional skills first, followed by the academic skills, and we've seen some great success with that. To give you a timeline, we actually started in 2016 as a fourth marking period recovery course, just trying to get students to graduate. In 2017 was our first full year, if you heard, it was the after-school program, we were there until about 7:30 at night. I have to tell you, that was a great experience, but it was freezing by the time 7:30 rolled around, so I'm very grateful for where we moved forward from there. In 2018 is when we really realized that students need the social and emotional piece in order to be successful, and that's really where FLEX as we know it comes to be. That's also where we involve our ESS services, or Effective School Solutions. They're a clinician that's specific to the FLEX program, that works with our students therapeutically. And finally, in 2021, we had the opportunity, a little bit thanks to COVID, to come into East Brunswick High School, and we've now integrated ourselves fully in the high school. We work very closely with Dr. Vanilla, and our students benefit from not only that social environment, but all the supports that the high school offers, and I'm very grateful to be there now. Some of our biggest accomplishments is we have a 90% graduation rate, and these are for students who probably would have dropped out. They would have dropped out, they would have been somewhere else, and we get 90% of them out with a high school diploma. For the 10% who don't, I'm even more proud to tell you that we make sure they either go to the elite program to get their GED, or they're in a work program outside of this. So we make sure that they're successful in some way outside of East Brunswick. The second is that we make sure that our students have a clear and effective transition plan. We learned very quickly that you don't just go from A to B, so when we transition them back to the high school or Churchill, we do so in a very calculated manner, which I'll show you in a little bit. And the third is that we use data-driven decisions with all of our curriculums. To give you an idea of who benefits from the FLEX program, there's really three categories of students. And the first are the ones who have an academic need. Those are the students who are struggling academically, and I mean significantly struggling academically, and a lot of them could benefit from the one-on-one attention and the supports that we have in the program. The second is the social and emotional need. We know by now that a lot of these behaviors are born out of trauma, whether it's acting out, or school avoidance, or anxiety, all of those things have a root cause, and those are the students who also benefit from our ESS and even just our wellness block as well. And the third, and that's a new one for us, is CIF students. And those are students with interrupted formal education. Those are students who have not been in school for quite a few years. A lot of times they move from outside of the country, but they could move from anywhere in the United States as well. And the biggest issue there is that those students are lacking the skills. They're not lacking motivation, they're not lacking desire to be successful, but we recognize that they need even more support to catch them up and make sure they have a successful life outside. And students do have to be in two of three of those categories in order to be considered for FLEX. I'm grateful for all of the resources that we have at the high school, so any single one of those can be met by what the high school has, because it's so robust, but when you get, start tangling them all together, that's where we come in. Some of the benefits of FLEX is the one-to-one academic support. Our biggest class is 21 in the PE department, our smallest ones are three to four students at a time, so there's a lot of teacher interaction, there's a lot of small group work as well. We also have differentiation in small individualized environment, and those are different from each other. Differentiation allows us to modify the work based on the students' levels, which we find through specific data. Whereas the individualized environment, we target what it is that the students want to do with their lives, or what they're interested in right now. So if they're interested in getting a job, we work specifically, say, in their English class to help them write the resume for that, and we use our curriculums to our advantage to target what it is that they need and want. Like I said, we use data tracking, and one of the biggest areas we use that for is their reading levels, because that's a major predictor of success, and our wellness block, again, another layer of ESS support that I'll talk about in a little bit. In terms of our schedule, we actually have a differentiated schedule. Most East Brunswick High School comes in at 8:00 AM and leaves at 2:45 PM. We recognize that our students with significant trauma probably also have depression and anxiety, which makes it way harder to wake up in the morning. And so what we've done is moved them back till 9:45 AM. It is still entirely possible for a student to graduate from East Brunswick High School with this schedule, entirely possible to do that. But our students come in at 9:45, and we block it off by their subject. So you have science, history, English, all of their cores. And there are two teachers in each room. So if at any time they're struggling with one teacher, or they're having a hard time, they can rotate teachers or rotate groups. I'm also just wanting to say thank you for a moment, because that science block is actually our brand-new course, the Integrated Science Course, and I really appreciate you approving that at the last board meeting. The Integrated Science is a new course for us, and it has been wildly successful. It really engages students, and we've seen probably the best grades in science we've seen in years, so I just want to take a moment to thank you for approving that. Our wellness block is something that all FLEX students engage with regardless of their level of involvement with ESS. So ESS has a few levels. Some of our students participate in individual counseling and group counseling, and some don't. Depends on what they need, depends on their outside involvement, depends on if they have an interaction with a counselor at school. But at the end of the day, the wellness block is a curriculum that we developed in conjunction with ESS that focuses on that social, emotional, and academic piece. So during that block, our students are in a group where they might talk through a scenario that happens, for example, something happens at school, what would you do about it? Somebody posts on social media, how would you handle it? What are your resources? We walk our students through real-life events and talk them through what they should and should not do. It also gives us a moment to do an academic check-in with them as well. So you have constant counseling, constant academic check-ins, a full wraparound for students, and it does not matter the level that they're in ESS, every student in the FLEX program gets this. And the block is considered to be educational and not therapeutic. So some families do struggle with that therapeutic component, it's not therapeutic, we're just educating you about how to handle your life a little bit better. In terms of data tracking, we use running records, so as soon as a student comes into FLEX, regardless of where they're from, or what grade level they're in, we immediately do a running record on them, because we want to know what reading level they're at. And you'd be surprised how many students who present themselves very well are actually covering for the fact that they really can't read. And so we've actually equipped our students with a lot of different data and a lot of different resources. We've also worked with Mr. Palooza and AI to try to pull in some of those resources to change reading level material on the fly, and we've seen a lot of success in getting students to engage with areas they really couldn't read before. And we also use math as well, we use a lot of local diagnostics, tests, exams, marking period grades to determine where they're at. But the other thing we're really proud of in terms of data tracking, like I said, is skills. So we use a point card to track academic skill development, and not just their grades. What you see here are four areas that we feel that students need to be successful in, in order to be successful in the traditional environment. And that's respect, language and communication, getting started, and task completion. So while a typical point card might be behavior, right, you have to be good this many times a week or show up on time, for us, we've built all of that into a little bit more of an applicable way. Yes, you have to be respectful, you have to put your phone down and look at somebody when they're talking to you, just like we do for you, you have to do that for us, and that's a life skill. So is language and communication and being respectful. You cannot be, you cannot curse every other day. I know it's frustrating, and I know some days are harder than others, but having a clear guideline for students makes it a lot easier for them to see where they're being successful, and for us to target where they're being successful as well. Now, the way we use this is we actually use it through the point card system and the level system. So as students earn points, they level up, and with each level, they get a reward of some kind, a choice that they can have, a 10-minute walk pass, a music pass, and eat lunch with a friend pass, and so it's a little bit of a motivator, they want to do something outside or get something extra. But in reality, what's happening is that we're seeing their success go up. There's 10 levels total that a student can max add up, and that means by the time they get to level seven, we know they've mastered those skills that can make them successful back at the high school or Churchill, so we know data-wise that they're ready to transition back, and we have the proof for that. We also are heavily involved with parents. We know that parents sometimes struggle and have a hard, have had a terrible experience with schools in the past, whether they're coming from outside, or maybe their child's gotten in trouble a lot. So it's my role as the administrator to re-bridge that gap and to have them trust our schools again. We involve them from the very first time, and I, I have to tell you, I talk to our parents, the majority of them, almost on a daily, if not an everyday basis. We, from, like I said, from the beginning, we involve them in the individual program plan, which I'll show you, but we also involve them in their attendance plans and their appeals. I feel as an administrator, it's my philosophy, that a lot of times we tell people what we think that should be best for them, I think that doesn't make any sense. I think bringing in students and saying, okay, what's reasonable for you, what can you commit to, what's your bar, what is your goal? And when you get that buy-in, we've seen a lot more success. When we go through the appeal and it's successful, that attendance plan is now something we've agreed on. I'm not telling you, we're agreeing on it, and we've seen students come back, recover, and graduate from that. This is the very first thing we show them, the individual program plan, just for a sample, so this is actually the part of the paper that I send up to Dr. Waleski to show him why we have a student in FLEX. You know, we have the name and the ID and all the good stuff, but then I give him a general background information as to why a student's here. This particular student was chronically absent and was in danger of losing credit and not graduating because of that. But at the very bottom, you see already off the back, I'm asking parents, what is it that I can do for your child? I ask them to fill that out and tell me what is so great about your child, what is it that I can do for them? And it's not like a classic survey, like, oh, tell me about your kid. No, I really want to know, like, is there anything happening outside? And once we kind of, they tell us that, I feel like we've created a bridge. And a lot of times, they will tell us, my kid's great, they're struggling. Thank you for telling me that, let's move on to the next step. With the transition plan, like I said, this has taken us a few years to develop, but I'm very proud of the fact that we do this slowly and meticulously. So when we transition students back to their homeschool, whether that be Churchill or the high school, we do it one block at a time. So, for example, I always start by moving into block one and five. Why? Because block one and five starts at 8:00 AM, and if students haven't been there at 8:00 AM for a while, we should probably practice waking up early and getting somewhere on time. In that week, it's about a week or two each, we do it throughout the whole quarter, so about a week or two each per class, we need to make sure they have a 70% or higher in their work, and that there's no suspensions, and their attendance is going well. Why? Because if I put them out in the environment and they're failing a class, I need to pull them back in, because maybe I was wrong, we weren't ready and our data didn't show that. So if at any point none of this works, we pull them right back into FLEX with no consequence. The other piece to it, after this, this is usually our first step, but like I said, we ask students all along the way what they want to do. So a lot of times I'll say, okay, tell me the order of classes you want to go out. And some say I'd like to take the harder classes out, some say I'd like to start with my electives, some say, Ms. Kennard, can I just do this for a quarter, let me try? And I honor all of that, because when they're in control, they're more successful. But typically, we recommend that they go out to the tougher classes first, because if something goes wrong, we can pull them back a little bit faster. But again, it's up to them. I'm also really honored to work with the staff that you see here. What's really great about this staff is that while all of our teachers have the skills in working with students, these I hand-selected specifically because of the level and type of skills that they have in working with at-risk students. You need far more patience, because those students can be oppositional defiant, they can be difficult, they can have a good day and a bad day, and so I need you to be patient. But I also need you to have a high standard, and that's why all of these teachers were selected, because they have those two things. Just because you're having a tough day doesn't mean I can't expect you to do nothing, and these teachers push them gently, but the work they get out of them is amazing. I'm also honored to tell you that this is only a snapshot of the number of teachers who have worked with us over the last five years. So what's really cool about this is we actually have like a secret FLEX group outside. We've worked with, say, five or six other English teachers and history teachers as well. So now, when we make those transitions, we typically send them out to a previous FLEX teacher who knows our system, knows what we're doing, has the connection with me, I have the connection with them, and we've seen, again, a lot of success with those teachers as well. In terms of the development, right now, professional development, we're focusing on the cross-curricular lesson development, we're focusing on creating sort of a cohesive conversation, especially between English and history, there's been a lot of crossover, so we're very excited to continue that. And also, of course, working with at-risk students, that's a constant PD we're always running, our faculty meetings that I'm lucky enough to have because Dr. Vanilla provided us with that time, we sit down for the first 25 minutes and just talk about students, talk about them, what are you seeing? It's very similar to the old-school house model that Hammershold has, and that's really the best way that we talk about students, because we can all target what they need at the same time. In terms of the future of FLEX, we next year will be focusing on a community-based project. Relationships are the key to success for any student, but especially those who are at risk. So coming together and creating a community-based project we decide on, whether that's one in the school or one that we do outside, there's a common goal that we're moving toward, and so we're excited to bring that in next year. I've also brought the idea of an eighth-grade after-school intervention program. We know that by the time they get to FLEX, there's been years of why they're in FLEX, and so I'm going to propose the idea of having an intervention program for eighth-grade students and trying to catch some of those behaviors early, getting them involved, getting the counseling, and really having a conversation about cutting things off before they get worse. I'm also going to continue to expand the FLEX program as well, like I said, I brought in CIF students this year, and I've been working with Ms. Kim Cruz Garcia on sort of some newcomer conversations, and how do we integrate these students when we get here? Like I said, Integrated Science, and thank you again for approving that curriculum, that will be next year's science, but we're piloting it this year, and during the curriculum committee next week, we'll be presenting Pathway to Algebra. Pathway to Algebra, quick overview, is that we recognize that a lot of our students are struggling with the core academic skills. They don't, not all of them know how to do math, the basic algebra, the systems, the equation, even the pluses and minuses can be difficult. So this Pathway to Algebra is actually an entire course based on getting them the basic algebra and math skills, so that they can be confident in math, and that when maybe they go on to the next steps of the pathway, can be more successful. So again, I'd like to thank you again tonight for having me, is there any questions that I can address?
Thank you so much, we definitely made the right decision putting you there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I'm thrilled with this. Do any board members have any specific questions? Mr. Hong?
Very good program.
Thank you.
It's very good presentation, too. We're really not leaving a single student behind. So my question for this, for your FLEX staff, those 15 teachers, are they teaching outside this program?
Yes.
Or they just focus on this, with this FLEX program?
So they teach outside of it, so actually our students remain in the same classroom all day, and the teachers come to them. But they teach, say, normal four blocks of their other classes, and they come to us for their last period.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Winston?
Thank you. Ms. Kennard, every once in a while I come across somebody who owns a program, loves the program, I think you're amazing. I think what you build is ridiculously awesome, so for that, I appreciate it. I do have a few questions, though, for clarity. How many kids do you have rotating at one time collectively through the program?
On average, we have between 20 and 25.
20, 25.
Mm-hmm.
And then on, under the, which, which student benefits, benefit from the FLEX program? Help me with this, you said they need to have two of these.
Mm-hmm.
Tell me the rationale behind that. When I look at a couple of them, they seem severe on their own.
They are.
So I'm wondering why two out of the three?
Because we have such high-level supports at the high school, that any single one can be addressed and isolated. So for example, the academic need, we have the study skills courses, we have great teachers, we have IEPs, we have the 504 Plan, there's a lot of targeted academics that counseling and our supervisors have put in place, that just that alone is not enough. But then when we start to get, and we get into the trauma, that alone can be addressed with counseling, right? You have a student who's maybe struggling with anxiety. I also run home instruction, so a lot of times I see students need a timeout, they go out into a facility program, they do what they have to do, and they come back. go out into a facility program, they do what they have to do, and they come back. There's no need for flex. We had to address the mental health for sure, and we make those modifications through home instruction, but that's not necessarily a key for flex. And then the SCIF students, you have a very robust, English as a second language program right now, and there's a lot of pushing ESL teachers into the core academics, like US history. So that alone can each be addressed. But when you start combining those things, we have students shutting down, their, their parents won't take them into a facility program, their parents themselves are not capable of bringing them where they need to be, and their families need help. That's where we come in, because we have this core sort of Care Bear hug, I guess is the best way to say it, where we don't pick up just students, we pick up their families too. And so typically, when we see that back cycle need to break it, they have more than one of those things.
Okay, just the last question, then, you mentioned, thank you for that.
Thank you.
About 20 students, are you at capacity? Do you, what can the board do? If you could ask the board to do something for you because you need it, to go to another level, what, what would it be?
Oh my goodness, this is like when I was a kid, if my mom asked me what I wanted for Christmas. I, I was, oh my gosh, I don't even know where to start. The continued development of our flex program, I think relies on the additional staffing in order for us to assist, so I think, not necessarily hiring other teachers, but providing other opportunities for teachers, perhaps through another sixth period, or potentially through an after-school program, or the expansion of a before-school program. So, I guess, the short answer is, the more staff I can get in more creative ways, whether that's before-school, after-school, or more opportunities in during the block, that would be the best way for me to expand it.
And help more kids.
Absolutely. And I, that, to be honest with you, that is my ultimate dream. I, I would really like to build a school within a school, is my ultimate goal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reese?
Okay, first, thank you so much, your explanation, it's a wonderful program, it's helping so many folks. I, I'm just curious if you could just explain a little more about, you talked about jobs, I want to make this, you talked about jobs, you talked about preparing them, some, some of the folks with their resumes. Is there integration with the co-op program at the high school? Could you explain that?
Absolutely. Let me just hit the button. The electives, it's co-op.
Oh, excellent.
We actually have our own co-op specific to flex. So our electives are actually Studio Art, co-op, and the world language of Spanish we focus on, just so you know. So our co-op is very robust, she works with them every day, she actually interviews them, pretends to interview them, sometimes she'll ask me to do it, oh, which is pretty cool too, like, I get this cool opportunity for me to interview them, but it's very robust, and we're pretty much, she is constantly making phone calls for them to get a job. We actually have one young man, we've been working with him for about a year and a half to get a job, and he was really struggling to get that job. I might almost tear up, because he not only got the job, but ran around to thank everybody who helped him, including co-op and counselors, so. It takes a lot of work, but the payoff is unbelievable, so we do actually have our own co-op, to answer your question.
So it falls under world languages?
Uh, it says world languages and then electives.
Yes.
That, it's, I run them all in the same period.
Wonderful, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. Like Mr. Winston, and I think my fellow board members, just so very impressed with this program, the work and the effort. Couple of quick questions, is flex an acronym, or is it, who thought of that title? I'm curious.
It was here before I got here, but, but it is flex is flexible. Oh, Dr. Valeski came up with it, I meant to say that.
Very cool.
I said that, right? Everybody caught that?
Very cool.
Thank you.
That's so cool. And do we know of other districts that are, are also, you know, engaged in similar programs?
Yep, and Ms. Tippett and I have actually gone to see them.
Very cool.
Yep, and we've talked to them, I have a pretty good communication link with several of them.
That's great.
So it's cool, we bounce ideas, and the other thing that's great is ESS connects us with a lot of them as well.
That, that's a, and I'm piggybacking off that for my next question, is, you, you mentioned, and I really admire and respect, the data tracking that you're doing to, to, you know, really evaluate and constantly reevaluate how we are responding to the needs here. Is ESS also administering any evidence-based evaluations to these young people, you know, whether, like clinically?
Yeah.
To evaluate the trauma in their, in their?
Yep.
You know, okay. And do we have access to that data? Is that shared with us, or is that, they're kind of keeping that?
Some of that does have to do with HIPAA, I can definitely look into it.
I'm not asking for it, I was just curious, like, you know, for our own.
I could share with you that they do, they actually, so we're on a tier three, so there's different tiers to ESS, and we're actually on tier three, the highest level.
Oh, okay.
So our students not, they, by definition, get one in-person session a week for about 30 to 40 minutes, and at least one group. I can tell you right now that they get like four or five of those a week, and at least two to three groups, so they're using it non-stop.
Yeah.
And actually, I'm very lucky that, her name is Grace Hickey, she's wonderful, and she's worked with us very well, but she'll actually just hang out in the room sometimes all day, because they just need her. And we'll just take my office, and we'll just talk what we got to talk to. So we're very fluid, I'm not, here's my office, here's what's happening. My door is actually always open to the students, and sometimes Ms. Hickey brings them in, and we got to talk then and there, but that's what happens.
Yeah, I think that collaboration is going to be so, you know, it's going to continue to uplift the program as a whole, I think it's really wonderful. And the final thing, because, you know, I've been in the behavioral health and, and mental health space for many, many years, and one of the things that we've always struggled with is post-discharge data, right, is following people afterwards, and it sounds like, you know, this young man that you referenced, but the more that you can do to kind of, you know, gather that and, and celebrate, you know, the wonderful work that you're doing, I think it's just going to continue to enhance the program, so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Not everyone on the board was here when Dr. Valeski came to us with this years ago. I think Barbara's shaking her head. So the school within the school and the flex program, you have done wonders with it, but you know, we, we have to.
I, I did nothing, Jamie's done it all.
But you know what, you, you came up with the idea, and you found the right person to, to spearhead your vision?
Well, I'll tell you, as Jamie's presenting tonight, I'm, I'm thinking back to, it's like you have those deja vu moments, when we, we were having the conversation internally about actually getting ready to start flex, and we actually hired somebody outside of the district to come in and manage this program at night, and it really took off when Jamie took charge of this, because she was an East Brunswick teacher. She came with that East Brunswick mantra of excellence, and she developed relationships with students, and what she isn't telling you is her relationship with the students is a huge component, that's not a slide up here, but that's a huge component to success, because our students are looking to someone they can trust, and Jamie is that person that they can trust. That, that is the constant in their lives that they don't have anywhere else. So that's why we're seeing success, and, and Jamie underestimates her contribution to that, because without that, I don't think we would see that 90%.
Your passion's very evident. A lot of people come up and they give us presentations, we have this here, we're looking on the screen, but everything you can tell, you're living, breathing, everything, you know, you're, you're passionate about it, because it means so much to you, which is why I'm sure why you're so successful.
And she's always looking to improve it.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thank you, that's all I could say, and I've been very honored to be supported, because I have some crazy ideas. Wild, and I usually go to Dr. Bowley, and she's like, okay, let's just try it.
Fine line, crazy ingenious.
And she lets me try it, and whether I fail or I succeed, I, I, it works, and so I'd like to thank Dr. Valeski for his continued support, the board, I really appreciate you, and Dr. Bowley especially, thank you for everything so far.
Oh, is it your hand, Mrs. Wess?
I, I am a huge fan, a huge fan, and I am a huge fan of keeping at-risk and behavioral students in district, so I love everything about this. So here's my list of questions. Do we have special ed and 504 students in the flex program?
Yes, we do, they're about, it's like roughly 50/50 at any time, just the way that it goes through, but we do, we service both.
Excellent. What's our physical space for the flex program?
Can I go back to my Christmas list, because I'd like that to be big? Furniture baby. That was my, that was my, caught me in the moment.
Come back next year.
That's fair, next year I would like. We have one room to us, so it is not a very large physical space for us, and we do a lot of creative thinking on things, but we actually have rearranged our room to be two different spaces. I'm a big proponent of work with what you have, I'm honored to have what we have, and I'm going to keep it going no matter what. But, like, even the other day, like, we had no space down in physical education, so my teachers were like, forget it. They went down to the cafeteria, they put a bunch of balls on cones, and our kids threw bean bags, and had the best time ever. And if you actually watch the video, Dr. Vanilla does it too, so if you want to go back and check that out, he misses a few times, just so you know, but physically, we only have one room.
Okay, that's, I was thinking while you were talking, I did 14 years as a behavioral teacher, and I'm like, 25 students needs space. My other questions, let's see, do we do any support professional development for teachers that are accepting the students back into the general ed classes in the high school?
We do not, but it's certainly a goal, something that I could do, and a lot of times, that's why I try to use the current flex students. I think that's a, that's sort of an overarching goal that's going through the high school right now, is working with these students, so I sort of piggyback on that, but I don't necessarily work with that teacher directly, but it is definitely an area that we can improve on.
Do we provide transport, I'm assuming, because they come in later?
Correct, yeah, we do.
Do we transport everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
And I wanted to know, are they able to participate in other activities at the school, like sports and drama and?
That's why we move it till 2:45, and we actually have a student participating in key club right now, another student who wants to participate in esports, we're working on that, but a lot of our teachers too, do the after-school or know the after-school. So a lot of our students struggle, like, with going to see it, so we'll go down, we'll check it out, and then they join it, and another one who wants to join the drama club as well, so.
That's awesome. My final question is sort of out there, have we ever been approached about accepting students from other districts?
The ideas come up, but we've never been approached about it, but it's certainly something that Dr. Bowley and I have discussed before.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Sizmar.
All my questions were answered, but I, I have to say, whatever other board members said, I'm blown away.
Thank you.
You know this stuff, you're not looking at note cards, you're just like, like you know it, I, I think even Laurie said, like, you, you live it, you breathe it, you had answers to everything. To me, that's amazing, it's not, it's not, you know, I just, that's the only thing I had to say, it was just like, you know, if somebody's stumbling up there, I'm sorry, I'm going to pick them apart a little bit, even if in my own mind, but you were just amazing, and, and I, I think we should, you know, expand this a little bit how we can. So Jeff, when you brought up about what do you need, yeah, what do you need? Maybe two gifts this year, instead of one, so thank you very much, awesome, awesome.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, it's so great to see you, and I'm thrilled.
Thank you so much, it was a pleasure to see you as well.
Yeah. It did. It did. Well, I have another treat for you guys. Couple of weeks back, at the DiWali Festival, I met this lovely young woman and her family. Persis is a 10th grader at the high school, and she is someone who thinks beyond just what she needs for herself, but for the needs of others, and so she's going to present to us her Green Good Guardians program that she has developed.
Good evening, everybody, thank you so much for having me and allowing me to talk about my nonprofit, Green Good Guardians. So over the summer, me and my brother started Green Good Guardians, which is an eco-conscious nonprofit dedicated to reducing environmental impact, while supporting education through the Second Verse Initiative. This Second Verse Initiative aims to collect, repurpose, and donate. We collect underused notebooks from various collection boxes that have been placed throughout the township, and we purpose these underused notebooks to create Second Verse notebooks, which have been placed by you, and these are then donated to the under, to families who need them, or organizations that work with families who need them. So far, in order to donate, I've partnered with EBEA and the EB Sustainability Task Force, and through the word of mouth, other schools and other teachers have gained awareness of this program, this initiative, and they've asked to, for me to supply them with the Second Verse notebooks. For example, the New Brunswick School District, I've been in contact with a New Brunswick teacher, have been able to supply her with the Second Verse notebooks. And so my goal is to collect as many underused notebooks as possible, to create as many Second Verse notebooks as possible, and to donate them to as many families as possible. So far, this initiative has been acknowledged by the New Jersey Sustainability Department through, they've posted about this initiative through their various social media channels, and the Second Verse Initiative has been able to collect hundreds of notebooks from the various collection boxes, and we've been able to acquire hundreds and thousands of pages, which have been used to create hundreds of Second Verse notebooks. And today, I actually had a meeting with the Old Bridge Superintendent, Mr. Sedidino, who, some of you may know him, and he has agreed to place collection boxes in the 15 Old Bridge schools, which, you know, will help in even greater furthering the Green Good Guardians mission. So while this program is experiencing steady growth, I am here today to seek your guidance and help in cementing the program in East Brunswick. Me and my brother, we've grown up here, Green Good Guardians, the home of this nonprofit is East Brunswick, and I want East Brunswick to be a model school district for this program, and that starts with putting permanent boxes in some of the schools that haven't really entertained the idea, and spreading the word to families, which has been a real struggle in the development of this program, as I'm not able to, you know, spread the word to all East Brunswick families, but I know you all have significant outreach on the entire township. My aim is to make the Second Verse box a daily part in students' lives. I want families to not feel the need to throw away and waste notebooks, but rather have the ability to give them away for repurposing and to a better cause, is they'll be donated to the underprivileged. So, yeah, that's fine.
All right, so, I want you to know, and I had the unfair advantage of knowing, I brought you a bunch of stuff, so.
A bunch of notebooks?
Yes, although I have one binder in here, which you may not want.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Will you take binders too?
Yes.
Okay, so I do have, I do have a bunch of stuff. Somebody give me this. And other board members, maybe we should have something at the board office where they can bring things as well. Oh, so we have lots of questions for you, you did a great job, by the way.
Thank you.
It's not questions so much as accolades, I think I see a very proud parent in the audience, and you should be. You are an amazing young woman, you have incredible poise, you're so articulate, but what impresses me is, so many people talk the talk and walk the walk about eco-conscious and sustainability. Well, you are running the walk. You are actually, you think about it, the concept, it's actually kind of like, why didn't somebody think of this before? But you did, and you're doing something about it, and that, that commitment and that passion, taking something, embracing it, and, and, and turning it into a physical reality is just wonderful, and when I think of all the things that are wrong with this world, it's young women like you who give me great faith and hope that you're going to solve so many problems as you go forward.
Thank you.
And I thank you for this, this wonderful, wonderful initiative.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wess?
This is phenomenal, I love this. I've been a teacher for 32 years, and I'm always horrified at the number of notebooks that get discarded at the end of the year, that have like three things written in them, or ones that just show up, that have two things written in them, and you don't even know where they belonged. But separate from having a phenomenal idea and this community-mindedness, being able to speak to a whole group of adults at a microphone is an entirely separate skillset, and your skillset is impressive, so that was so well done. I do want to say, I love all of your ideas, if I can add, because you said you were asking, so I would like to add, not just putting boxes in the schools to collect all year long, but maybe doing a very focused drive at the end of the school year during locker clean-out, because that's when the bulk discard happens, the amount of waste at locker clean-out, and I don't know if our high school does a locker clean-out at separate times throughout the year, I should ask you, but if we do locker clean-outs, like if there's a locker clean-out before winter break, or if it's just at the end of the year, but whenever there's a focused time, when recycling is put out, the garbage cans, and students are told to like purge down, that is such an opportunity for you to be there, and, and I would love to take a collection box with me.
We're going to go down the line.
You rock, you rock, that's, that's awesome. How are you doing this? Where are you, where are you doing this? Did your, did you carve out some space in the garage? What's going on?
Yeah, yeah, so basically, this is literally offering out of my parents' bedroom, my...
Nice.
Dad of the year.
Um, we've actually gone through at least like three industrialized paper cutters, we've finally gotten like a good one, hopefully this will last a while. So basically, the notebooks, using the paper cutter, they're cut, the, on, the used pages are taken out, they're discarded, recycled, and the underused ones, since notebooks come in various different sizes, we normally have to make like standard sizes, we have like three different sizes, we standardize them, we have to print the covers, the backs, and then using a binding machine, we're able to bind them, and actually, all the notebooks, they only contain up to 50 pages, because, you know, regular composition notebooks, they contain 100 pages, and half the time, kids only use like 20 of them, the rest of them are, you know, thrown away. So 50 pages, just to ensure that, you know, all of them are used, none of them are wasted.
That's brilliant, definitely, and are all of them, they're all bound the same way, I assume?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Perfect, that's awesome. Are you familiar with TerraCycle? Have you heard of that company?
Um...
They're down, I think, in Princeton?
They are.
Yeah, and a very similar model to this, and they're doing a lot, they're going to want to hire you probably very soon, so just get ready, to run their company, yeah, but they do a lot of this great, you know, this upcycling, it's called, right? So really, really interesting company, I love that you're doing this, I think it's a great initiative, and congratulations, and thank you for this, it's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beautiful work, it's amazing what initiative that you have, and even the promotional material that you have along with it is, is so impressive, and I was going to ask a similar question about the production, so I have an idea for getting help, maybe you already looked into this, the East Brunswick Youth Council, which is an excellent organization, they can help as well, also National Honor Society, and some of our honor societies at the high school have to do community service hours, so they can help as well. So there's lots of organizations that require through the high school, community hours, because that sounds like a lot of cutting time and a lot of printing time in the house, so, but thank you for what you're doing, you're a real example to us all.
Thank you.
All of that, they said, so two thoughts come to mind. When I get home tonight, I'll be having a conversation with my boys who are juniors and letting them know they need to up their game a tad, so there, there's a little bit of lag there. What has been the resistance? I see you have five... I see you have five schools listed on the bottom of this page. And you're at the high school, right?
Yeah.
And that's not on the list. What's going on?
So I actually have been, I've actually targeted the elementary schools, because in the high school, we were mostly like electronics, like we'd mostly use the laptops and stuff. And the elementary schools is mostly when the kids use the notebooks. Now that you've brought it up, I'm thinking we probably should be placing a box at the high school. And while I did reach out to other elementary schools, like Lawrence Brook, Bauman Rowan, Irwin, I didn't really receive any support from them, so I wasn't.
She will tonight.
Is there a motion? Can we do something that?
I don't even think the board needs to take action.
No.
I'm just going to tell you to put the box there.
They heard it.
We know a guy.
And now you know the guy.
And honestly, I think that we need to move you out of your parents' bedroom and figure out a space where we could collect some of this stuff and maybe help process it. Yeah, we could use my office, that's fine with me. But I think that's, I think this is really cool. And I think that you can drop those boxes off tomorrow if you want to.
We have two other board members, Ms. Sizmar? I don't know if Mr. Hong does, but.
I just have a question, it says about sponsoring a box, whatever. You're able to accept monetary donations, and how would somebody do that?
Money?
Yes. Yeah, it's like, because I know, I mean, these plastic things must cost money. Is there a way for people to make monetary donations as well as notebooks?
Yes, so this nonprofit, Green Good Guardians, is in process of applying for the 501(c)(3) charity organization. So once we have it, we'll put it up on the website for the people to come and do it.
And can you get word back to us too? Because then we could push it out too, that you're now able to accept monetary as well as notebook donations. That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you, great job.
So, I cannot agree more with whatever my fellow board member said. So, you know, as Ms. Becker said, you are doing it. So many people are talking about, and so many big companies, for perfect, they just waste so many things. In my house, we have different charger for iPhone, iPad, you know. So everything, each one, you buy a new one, you got different chargers. Every year, they produce millions of tens of plastic chargers. What a waste. So you are doing this, and it means a lot. Okay? So as your father said, you are in the process of applying for 501(c)(3) status. If I can help, my office can help you if you need. So I can help you get that status. So this is one, my personal contribution. And I agree with Dr. Velasquez, where our school district may sponsor this space. You know, we need really move out from his bedroom.
We'll look at some options, but I think that, you know, we're just looking and talking about cleaning out lockers and about having that organized and the volume of paper that that probably could involve.
You don't want that in your bedroom?
No, probably not. Actually, Mr. Sidedino lives in East Brunswick.
Yeah.
And so you could drop it in his garage. Yeah, yeah. So, he'll be happy that I told you that.
So, at this moment, how many volunteers are working with you for this purpose?
Yeah, so that's like still in its developing stages. I've, I'm, I still need to talk with my grade 11 administrator about EB students being like given volunteer hours by working with Green Good Guardians. And actually, I have friends in other township, townships, like Livingston and Marlboro, they've agreed to become ambassadors for this program. My friend actually right now is currently waiting on her box to place in the Howell High School. And I'm waiting on a kid in Livingston. He's been asking permission to place a permanent box in his school as well. So that is also, yeah, something I'm looking for, like ambassadors, not only in East Brunswick, but in other school districts too, because it really will involve like the school population. Because, I mean, that's really who should be part of this program. Because, you know, we are the future, it's like our job to try and do this. So, yeah.
And at a certain time, you may need to recruit some adult volunteer, just like Ms. Sizmar, he has a truck. You will have a lot of driving. And they're driving around, you know, you need a safe driver, so maybe Ms. Sizmar is your bright choice.
You got it.
Is there somebody with a farm up here? Lots of acres?
Thank you very much, great job.
Thank you, thank you.
I think getting her, Dr. Velasquez, and the slacks, I think getting hours approved is something we could, we could work on, because, you know, she definitely needs volunteers to process all that material at the house. And that'd be wonderful, if they can get, a lot of our honor societies need the hours.
Students are always looking for hours, yes.
So that'd be great.
Yeah.
Is there a process that we have to follow to get this nonprofit registered with the school district so that kids can get hours, like community hours?
I think once you actually receive your legal identification as a nonprofit, then we can talk about how we can relate that to the school and ours, and we can, you know.
It is already a nonprofit.
Oh, but you, okay, okay.
The IRS has issued a 501, recognized you as a 501(c)(3)?
Not 501(c)(3), it's in process.
Okay, okay.
So once that is completed, then you'll be recognized as a nonprofit?
Yeah, then I think, give us a call when you get that paperwork. And be happy to have you come in, and we can start talking about strategizing, how we can dovetail this with East Brunswick to give service hours and to, you know, I'm sure that if you, if we put the word out that this is a processing service, we would have more paper than you could deal with right now. So we would have to make sure that, you know, we have, you have capacity with labor and materials to handle everything that, once we open the floodgates. Because I could make one phone call, and people would be dropping off all kinds of things. But I think we can do this systematically.
I feel a little worried, the minute we start to publicize, like what happens to your bedroom.
How many have you produced and donated so far?
We haven't kept a concrete number, but I'm thinking over 250, 300 Second Verse notebooks. And the notebooks we've collected, probably around maybe 400, 500.
Nice.
And then the number of pages, like a lot of pages.
Nice, yeah. I'd love to see, and you have a website?
Yes.
Right, I'd love to see that.
Yeah, the stats, yeah.
That'd be amazing, yeah. I like the size, too. I think this is really cool, and that it just fits about in just anything really, like your backpack, or even, even a woman's large bag, you know.
And that really is the amount they use.
Yeah, yeah.
And one quick fun fact, so on some of the notebooks, there is on the backside, there is a doodle. So this is also picture from the notebook that we received. Sometimes kids draw and then it takes. It's anonymous, but.
This is very cool.
Wilson, you choose one for the month.
Yes, one per month, but December is yet, is yet to be out.
This is so smart.
What are you doing, you're marketing?
Yes, I'm IT consultant, so yes, I'm handling all that.
Thank you so much, Persis.
Thank you so much.
See, I did not disappoint, I told you. I thought you would be very hard act of foul, Ms. Kennard, and you were.
She was wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
But she was wonderful and one of our own, this is what's going, which leads us into your peer at the high school. So, let's see, you topped that, Chris?
I'll try my best. So it's been a very eventful month at East Brunswick High School. I just wanted to go over some of the eventful things that have happened. On November 11th, the East Brunswick High School attended the annual Harvard and MIT Math Tournament down in Massachusetts, which was a great opportunity to visit both campuses and compete against other top schools in the nation. A few of our own students at the high school placed top positions, which is a very big accomplishment, considering everyone who goes to competition is very well-versed in mathematics. And it was just an overall great experience to look at, like at different competitions and look at the different programs that they were promoting, such as, I'm pretty sure Jane Street was there as one of the sponsors. It was just great to see all the connections. On top of that, on November 20th, the East Brunswick National Honor Society held the Anderson Bowl, which supported St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital. The seniors showed their dominance and won against the underclassmen this year, which was great, because I'm also a senior. And this was a very close game, and it was followed by a bonfire. And it was an entertaining event with a good cause. And in case you guys weren't able to make it this year, there's always next year. And there's always a great cause that the National Honor Society is supporting. And as December is approaching, many clubs and performing arts are well underway. To give a few examples, East Brunswick Model UN is holding tryouts for their second semester. And during their first semester, they had a lot of success, so I'm hoping for the same in the second semester. And mock trial, team tryouts are taking place this week as well. And a program that I want to talk about was AP IPEL. This week and last week, we had a lot of alumni from the program come back to the school and talk to us about the We the People Challenge. And this was overall a really good experience, because a lot of times in class, you learn a lot of things, but it's kind of difficult to see where you could use it later on in life. And a lot of the students that came back have positions at government jobs and/or are going into poli sci in college. And it's just great to see how an education in East Brunswick High School could help you out later on in life. And the AP IPEL program, we're competing in the We the People Challenge. And first, we have to win states. And then later on, if we make it past states, we could compete in Washington DC, which is something to look forward to. And on top of that, Student Council is hosting a winter door decorating contest between homerooms throughout this week and next week. And it's interesting to see all the new decorations that are coming up. A few of them are really holiday-oriented, while others are a lot more creative, I would say. And Student Council is also hosting a convention, partnering with the New Jersey Student Council Association, to look for future leaders and future board members on the state student council. Currently, we have, we have a position for the New Jersey State Student Council Vice President, which is Alina Chen, in our student council. And we're looking to have more leaders from EBHS participate in the New Jersey State Student Council. And on top of that, like Dr. Vanilla said, East Brunswick Drama Club is performing Shiko's Monsters on December 8th, 9th, and 10th. And after school, I see them all the time in the theater, putting in long hours of work. So I'm pretty sure this will be a very, very nice event. And if you guys have the time, it would be great to support them. And on top of that, East Brunswick Chorus Band and Orchestra are also performing over the next two weeks of December. And that's also something to look forward to. I'm in the Winter Sable Program. And it's just nice to see all the winter, winter performances that will soon be taking place. Really gets you in a festive spirit. And that's all, it's very evident that students at the high school are staying busy. And there's a lot of ways you guys can help out. If you guys are music lovers or fans of the fine arts, there's a lot of ways that you guys could help out.
Thank you, Chris, very exciting month. And some AP IPEL alumni end up being Board of Education presidents. But somehow, my invitation got lost in the mail, so I don't know.
We'll check on that.
We'll check on that.
Yeah, we'll check on that.
Thank you so much. We're going to actually take a quick two-minute recess. Okay, welcome back. We've had some great presentations, this is the kind of board meetings we like. And now we are at the Good of the Cause for the Public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. I would like to open the floor for any comments from the public. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the board. And as always, I like to remind everyone that do not take any silence on this part, is not being interested. Any follow-up that needs to be done will be left with the lovely lady in the second row. So, that being said, is there anyone this evening wishing to speak to the board? Quiet night, it was a tough act to follow those two, so. Therefore, I'm going to close the public portion and move on to our Board of Education items this evening. So may I please have a motion for items one through three under Board of Education? Moved by Mr. Winston. Second by Mr. Cummings. Is there any discussion? Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker? Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes, but abstention from item number two.
Noted. Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for community programs, one item this evening? So moved. By Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Winston, was it? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We have two items this evening for curriculum instruction. Mrs. Becker? Mrs. Reese is the second. Is there any discussion? I turned the page before, I looked to see if this was a roll call. This is not. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Before I ask for items one through 17, is there anything on financial services that needs to be separated out? Okay, then may I please have a motion for items one through 17? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Becker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion on any of those 17 items? Mr. Hong?
So for the item number five, this is about high school water, water pipe rupture. So this pipe broken caused not just the financial loss listed on this report, which caused loss of about $40,000 to student nutrition. And the repair cost was $241,000. So this, just as a financial impact, think about the interruption to our teaching, to our learning. And this time, very bad for interrupt the SAT exam. So this reminds us, when we think about a new high school or remodel the current high school, those aged pipe cables underground, just like a time bomb clicking, it could trigger any time. And each of this occasion will cost huge amount of time. So please put this thing in mind when we make the decision. Should we really do the remodel of old 70-year-old high school? That will cause huge amount of problems that can happen tomorrow. So let's keep this thing in mind, it could happen any time. Because we really don't know too much about what really exists in underground. So that is the things I hope our fellow board members and future board members, when we deal with this construction, we need to think about how to spend our money wise, how to spend the money for future. So that is my comment for this item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Hong. Is there any other discussion? Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes, but abstain number three on purchase order P2403258.
Noted. Mr. Cummings?
Yes, with an abstention on P2403274.
Noted. Ms. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes, abstention item number three, subitem P2403264.
Noted. Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, with abstention P2403260.
Noted. Motion carries.
Motion carries, bringing us to three items this evening for human resources. By Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Winston, is there any discussion? Mrs. Reese?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the district for that disagreement with Rowan Unit.
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the district for disagreement with Rowan University. I think, you know, it's wonderful that we're reaching out to different colleges to have internships for student teachers, there's, oh, I'm sorry, if you didn't hear me, I thanked the district for, and Dr. Bowley and Dr. Velasquez for reaching out to Rowan and other colleges to bring in student teachers. It's a wonderful relationship for both the student and for the district, and for, you know, in, we're nationwide, there are a lack of qualified teachers, so that we're preparing ahead of time to have those teachers for our students is, is very commendable, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong? Mrs. Reese? Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lax?
Yes, motion carries, may I please have a motion for Staff Development, one item this evening?
So moved.
Oh, in unison, Mrs. Gwass and Mrs. Becker, I think, um, is there any discussion on staff development? Uh, Mrs. Gwass?
Um, I've wanted first to thank the administration for, uh, the item number one, the Center for Counseling Services, about the presentation Compassion Fatigue, What to Do When Stress Overwhelms, for our administrators. I just think that mental health for everyone is important to be watching, not just our students. We very much keep a mindful eye to our students, but the staff as well. But I wanted, is this just for, am I reading this correctly, this is just for administrators, or is this for the staff on, as a fullness?
This is just for administrators this session, uh, we, I've talked to George Stone and, and, or, um, George Scott, rather not Stone, and we are talking about an expansion of this program, but this initially is, we're turning the administrative meeting into his session with the administrators.
I think this is fantastic, I hope we do put it out to more of the staff as well, thank you.
Well, I think, you know, we, what we found is that, you know, and anyone who has gone through a loss in their family, if you're a caregiver for somebody in your family, uh, you know, people will tell you very directly that being a caregiver takes a huge emotional toll on you, so you have to make sure you watch out for yourself, um, and our teachers, our staff, our administrators are caregivers, and they are caring for everyone else except themselves in some cases. So we're, we're gonna kick it off with this, and, but we very much hope to expand it, and I think, uh, George is, uh, is very excited about the opportunity to partner with us, and he's worked with us before, so...
I prefer him.
Yeah, this is...
He did a parent university.
Parent university.
It was wonderful, so he's a great speaker.
Yeah, and he has just a huge breadth of experience and background. He was an administrator in South Brunswick, that's where he initially started, uh, but he's just a great person, and I think he'll be a great resource for us.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries, bringing us to Student Services, five items this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Winston, um, any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lax?
Yes, motion carries, bringing us to New End or Old Business Committee Reports, information items, and for the Good of the Cause for the Board, Mrs. Becker. So, each year, the, um, RPAB, the Recreation Park Advisory Board, um, picks to, um, uh, an individual and a business to honor for being a Friends of the Recreation Parks and Community Services, and there was an award presentation at this past Monday's Town Council meeting, in addition to Route Eighteen Lumber being recognized for their community contributions. I want to give a shout out to the individual, uh, she's one of our own students, her name is Diana Weiner, and, um, Diana's, Diana's an extraordinary young woman. She has overcome so many challenges and obstacles, and today, after aging out of our recreational program, she's an active member and volunteers for Daisy Recreation. She also is currently giving back to the Daisy Recreation Program now as an employee. She participates in buddy baseball, basketball, she was a St. Bart's Buffalo Challenger cheerleader, and I believe she was also on the East Brunswick High School cheerleading team. She also participates annually in East Brunswick Education Association, Barnes and Noble Book Fair, and, um, she also took part in the East Brunswick Education Foundation Dance Off. She is to be commended and to be held up as a shining example of what our students are capable of, and the wonderful support and resources that exist, and shout out to her family for providing the kind of support that I wish for every child, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you. That's wonderful, and actually, um, Eighteen Lumber is also an East Brunswick High School alum. Oh, that's right, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't need to shortchange how wonderful they are, I just, um... It's always nice when we hear people that graduated from these halls and stayed, so. Thank you. All right, quiet evening this evening, so...
Oh, I have a little, oh, sorry. I just wanted to say, with eyes on our support for the foundation of the ice hockey team, and going into its second year, I was just speaking actually to some students that were going out for the team, and the growth of the team, the strength of last year and the support for it, they actually had enough students go out for it this year between the three districts that they had to make cuts. So the team is growing and thriving, and I just thought that was good news worth sharing.
That is good news. All right, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Becker and Mr. Winston, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions, motion carries, thank you so much, have a good night.